Good evening, everyone.
I have a meeting to order. Let's. Anybody have any comments on the last meeting minutes? I am through a roll call, Jack, I'm sorry, getting ahead of myself.
Commissioner Gobolman?
Here.
Commissioner Partain?
Here.
Commissioner Baker? Commissioner McClelland?
Here.
Commissioner Grant is excused. Commissioner Reed?
Here.
Hey, having a quorum, we will proceed. Is there any, all commissioners have read the minutes, are there any changes to be noted? Do I hear a motion to approve the prior meeting minutes?
Motion to approve.
Do I hear a second?
Yes.
Second by Gail? Roll call, Jackie?
Commissioner McClelland?
She is?
We're voting on the minutes, so yes.
Aye.
Aye. Commissioner Reed?
Yes.
Commissioner Partain?
Aye.
Commissioner Gobolman?
Aye. Minutes approved. Is there any citizen input that is not directly related to the item on the agenda tonight, just in general?
I'm here for the item.
All right. So this evening, we have item 4.1, conditional use permit for medical recreation marijuana dispensary at 48257 East First Street. CUP dash 002 dash 2022. The applicant name is Brandon Huntley. Correct? The permit type being requested is a conditional use permit. Do any members of the planning commission have any expertise? Contact? To declare?
No.
Does anyone in the audience wish to challenge the impartiality of the commissioners?
Yeah, I'd like to speak for that.
Challenge the impartiality of the commissioner?
Oh, no.
Well, that's good.
I'm ahead of myself.
Yeah. No, it's calm down, okay? So state regulations require me to inform all of you. Failure to raise an issue accompanied by sufficient statements or evidence to enable the commission and other parties to respond to the issue precludes appeal of that issue to the Oregon Land Use Board of Appeals. Anyone in the audience may request that the record be held open for one week. Only necessary for this first hearing. They may also ask that the hearing be continued, although that is discretionary with the planning commission. Planning commission decisions may be appealed to the city council within 14 days of the planning commission decision being mailed out as a notice of decision. At this time, I would like to have the staff report.
Um, I don't have a lot yet, but I went to a really exciting meeting today. First of all, with the Southland Solutions group and about 20 25 chapters, I guess, it's in from different groups. Economic Development to YB very deep about possibilities. Johnson's very uplifting. There's a bunch of new grants coming out. Specifically for smaller towns in Oregon. Okay, so. I mean, they're professional, very well organized. They're doing that quite. But this city and excited to work with. There's that. Well, there's some notes that might be helpful and I'm gonna, I wasn't sure if I was even invited to that meeting initially, but Sir Alvin's book called which you should be here, so I went over there, it was definitely with my wow. What's his wow? Some meetings are open to the public. And definitely get sent invite to the commission. Another one.
Great. Staff report.
Was that?
Staff report became to the issue.
Oh, no.
No?
Not, not, well, the only thing I have.
Henry did ours.
Sorry.
There was one issue that was brought up. Someone wanted to know too close to school, it's not, it's at least 1500 feet. All requires is 1000 feet, so that's not an issue, that's the only thing that's brought my attention. First, it's a fine.
Okay. At this time, I would like to ask the applicant to give their testimony.
Hello, my name's Brandon Huntley, I'm the project manager for LaMota. LaMota is a privately owned, family owned actually, and built company primarily is in the Oregon, in Oregon State, they own multiple retail dispensaries and outlets across the state of Oregon, I think at this point, we have 31 open stores with multiple more in the pipeline. And Moda has a track record of doing good work in the communities that they, that they are in and really striving to provide good opportunities for employment for the people that work in their stores and related businesses. And also ensuring that they have a very safe and welcoming environment for patrons to kind of go to their stores, and so we're really excited about the building there in Oak Ridge, the former Banner Bank is just a really, really nice building. We think that we can make it just with a few little minor touchups and painting and that kind of thing, we can just make it kind of pop in the downtown area and look very nice and fit in with the rest of the style and, and expectations that the community has. So we're excited about it, it's a beautiful building on the inside as well, we want to kind of have a different approach to the building on the inside in terms of making it welcoming for people to be there and maybe some space for them to relax, that kind of stuff. Just had to be a welcoming environment for our patrons and also a safe place for staff and everyone else, and the nice thing about the building is it's in such excellent, and has such a big retailer already because it's being a former bank, but there really is very little that needs to be done to it in terms of upgrades and everything, it's really meat and cheese of the days, and we just feel really positive about it and look forward to being a contributing member of the community there as a, as a business network.
Thank you. Do any of the commissioners have questions for the applicant?
I have a question, that's not there to.
Is there anyone who wishes to speak in favor of the proposal? Statements in favor? Statements in favor? Statements in favor? Hearing none? Does anyone in the audience wish to speak in opposition to this proposal?
Aye.
Please provide your name and address.
David Ackler. I live at 48265 Commercial Street. And I really I don't want, I, me personally, I don't want to be living by dispensary. I feel like it's not people have been walking down going uptown and it's, it's been a struggle, but I don't think the medical dispensary fits into what is going in uptown here. I don't feel like that dispensary would be a good fit right next to a park that's just been redone. Now, there's, there's people go to that park before they redone it, there was kids who played in that park before before it was done, and I'm sure that they'll be back in to hang out in a nicer spot. Even though we are, the schools are out of the zone there, 1500 feet or whatever, there's a lot of kids that walk up and down that street, I worry about basically the traffic. You know? Our police force is not in a position to set us, an officer down there to patrol for speeding. We have enough speeding up and down that street as it is that, you know, my, me myself, you know, you, you could walk halfway out of crosswalk and somebody's gonna come right. I worry about the the children in the community. And that's, that's basically why I'm against this. This, nothing personal, but I just, I, I just don't think it's a good fit for a town.
Do any of the commissioners have any questions for the speakers?
I do.
Or?
Oh, I'm, no. I just have a question about the fact that we already have a dispensary here.
Does the, Brandon, do you want to respond to the opposing testimony?
Yeah, sure, and I, I, you know, basically what I would say, number one, is that I fully respect the gentleman's opinion and understand, you know, what his concerns are. In response to what he's saying, I would say that LaMota does a really good job of not drawing a lot of attention to their stores from the outside, people need to know where it is, obviously, there'll be some signage, but nothing that would be out of the ordinary or inviting the children in any way, or trying to, trying to get children to be near that area or walking around that area for any other reason that they just happen to be there. And as far as the traffic goes, you know, I understand that concern as well, we don't anticipate that the traffic levels would increase significantly at the store and certainly no more than they were at the heaviest times of traffic during the Banner Bank years, so I understand that concern wholly and respect his, his concern and, and opinions, but we really just don't believe that it's gonna have that kind of a negative impact on the community area.
Thank you.
Yeah, one question, kind of follow up on that. I don't know, what do you have a vision for like the outside decor sort of thing, I mean, obviously, you've been in town, I wouldn't call it Norman Rockwell-esque, but you know, it's kind of old school vibe on, on First Street, which, you know, I think we'd like to keep versus, I don't know, like a bright pink building with Ching Chong in the window and lasers coming out or something like that, stuff that you're kind of what you had planned for the outside.
Well, we, that's a great question, and I, I appreciate that, definitely no paint building, we, we try to fit into the neighborhood that we're in. As an example, right now, we're, we're trying, we're getting a dispensary opened in the Oregon City area and are really working with their historical review board to make sure that what we, the changes that we make to the exterior of this old building that we've purchased really stay in line with what their expectations are and what the community standards are. And even with our historical review board, that's something that we try to do across the, across the state in terms of fitting into the community, not drawing a lot of negative attention to the building with signage and certainly not advertising in such a way that takes us back to those 70s movies of Ching Chong and, and that kind of thing, that's definitely not the image that LaMota is trying to promote or create for itself.
Something, a quick question, does this buy, the purchase of this property or does it lease or rent this property?
It's a purchase of the property, the owners of the company purchased it.
Thank you.
Okay, Brandon, thank you, we do have one comment, are there any comments in general? From those of you in the audience?
I'd like to reply back to one that is answers to the question about the kids, about, you know, I'm not so worried about, you know, kids coming in there. I'd be quite frankly with you, I'm worried about the people it's gonna draw up here and the safety of the kids, that's what I'm worried about. And I'm, you know, I really have a thing, if he's up and up about them purchasing the property without being forward about them being what their plans were as opening up as a dispensary. Because what I've understood is Banner Bank could not sell that property if they knew that that's what was planned to go in there.
I, I don't know how to respond, I don't know, have any knowledge of any sort of agreement that Banner Bank may have had, but the owners definitely own the, own the property on contract, so it's definitely a purchase, it's not a lease. And as far as the people being around and, and, you know, your concern around the safety of the children, the owners of the company, myself, most of the upper management of this company are, are are fathers and mothers and take safety very seriously, so as far as the people coming in to the store, it's maybe your community members that are coming into the store, maybe, maybe vacationers or people from out of town or enjoying the beauty of the area, because it was a beautiful area. But it's not gonna be, we don't really have issues with our patronage being the unruly kind or, or bringing negative things into the, into the area, they certainly don't hang out around the buildings and, and no consumption of marijuana is, you know, allowed anywhere near, so it's, it's just a retail store, it really is, it's, it's just like a, very, very similar to a liquor store, you know, and the same kind of people are going into liquor stores and other small retail stores in Oak Ridge that are gonna be going into the LaMota store. We, I really don't have a, I respect what you're saying, but I really don't have a lot of concern about the kinds of people that are gonna be going in and that they would maybe bring a negativity to your community, I, I just, I just don't see that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Ask one more question?
Sure.
Ah. So you guys, did you guys buy the property from Banner Bank, or did you buy that from somebody else that purchased it and then they sold it to you?
Unfortunately, I cannot answer that question, I am not sure, they've owned the building, I came on as a project manager in January and they've owned the building prior to that, so I'm not sure. If that's something the commissioner wanted to know, I could certainly find that out, but I, I don't have that answer right.
Okay, thanks.
You bet.
Any other questions from the commissioner?
No.
I, I do have one comment in general that I will read into the record, it is from Linda Cammerer. Lives at 48175 East First Street, Oak Ridge, Oregon 97463. Greetings, I am unable to attend the meeting this evening and would appreciate the following being read into the record under comments in general. The application before the commission involves an anchor property in the Business District of Uptown Oak Ridge. The proximity of this building to the post office, credit union, Cogwild, inbound, and other businesses make this a location a center of activity for both locals and visitors. In my opinion, a year round business would be an asset to the business district. I am not familiar with the OLCC regulations for marijuana businesses, so with that in mind, here are a few thoughts. Since this is a large building, I wondered if it would be possible to divide the space and part of the building be used for another retailer or office space. The corner location makes the building quite prominent in the street scape and thus the exterior signage and painting will have a strong impact on those passing by and the other businesses. Across the street is a newly refurbished park, you know, with outdoor seating and potential for a future EV charging station. I would encourage the owner of the property to use exterior finishes that are compatible and complementary to the properties nearby. That's that comment, are there any other comments in general? Certainly.
My question is, is because we already have a dispensary up on Highway 58, is that going to be, because the town's not very big. We have still over 3,000 residents, is that gonna be a problem for the other dispensary that's already here?
If I, if I could, there's been two in the past, and I realize one we're not, or it's no longer in business. I think it could probably being dislocation, it could probably support, it's a whole different group, I think. Down on the highway, people going through up here, Cogwild, the brewery, the distillery, so I think they're drawing from almost two different
crowds.
Crowd, two different groups of people, so along with that, I'd like to say that we do have, where do we, you know, two is plenty, let's say, I, I can personally if any more than that, I think would just be a little beyond what we should probably
So.
accept.
Uh, I'm gonna make a comment here that the business of the planning commission is to adjudicate whether or not the use of the land
I understand.
meets, meets the requirements of the city's land use, not to evaluate whether or not it's survivable.
Right.
Or the impact on any other retail establishments in, in Oak Ridge, our job is to ensure that their use of the structure fits within the codes that we have on the books. That's what we're to adjudicate against, and I'll go back, right now, I know that James is new in this position, so the, the staff report is really what's known as the finding of facts, and I will read this document into the record right now, which, which may clarify some gray areas that y'all might get. Section 24.06, general criteria, conditional use permit may be granted only if the planning commission finds that the proposed or conforms to all of the following general criteria and to all other criteria or conditions required by this section or the planning commission. That the proposed development shall be compatible and equitable with equitable policies of the Oak Ridge area comprehensive plan, so the recommended findings for approval. The city of Oak Ridge, through the passage of ordinance number 907 on March 26, 2015, amended the development code to allow for the sighting of marijuana retailers in commercial zone C2. The passage of ordinance 907 went through the local land use process and Department of Land Conservation and Development was duly notified on the pending amendments to the development code, the city's comprehensive plan does not specifically address the sighting of recreational and medical marijuana facilities as the city's current comprehensive plan was last updated in 1993. By passage of ordinance 907, Oak Ridge chose not chose to not prohibit marijuana facilities, therefore, they are permitted subject to the standards of ordinance 907 criteria addressed. Two, that location size, that the location size, design, and operating characteristics of the proposed development will be compatible with and will not adversely affect the livability or appropriate development of abutting properties and surrounding neighborhood with consideration to be given to harmony and scale, bulk, coverage, and density to the availability of public facilities and utilities. To the harmful effect of adding upon the desirable neighborhood character to the generation of traffic and the capacity of surrounding streets and to any other relevant impact of the development. Recommended finding for approval, the present proposal involves the use of an existing structure that previously served as Banner Bank. The applicant is not proposing any exterior alterations to the existing building. The so, the location, size, design, and operating characteristics of the proposal used will not be materially different than the previous use or surrounding uses. The applicant is concurrently going through the permitting and approval process with OLCC. A locally approved conditional use permit is a requirement to continue the permitting process through OLCC. As part of the permitting process through OLCC, the application will be required to obtain all necessary permits and approvals. Three, that the location, design, and site planning of the proposed development will provide a convenient and functional living, working, shopping, or civic environment and will be as attractive as the nature of the use and setting will allow. Recommended findings for approval. The proposal, the proposed use will occupy an existing commercial building that contains other commercial uses nearby, the applicant will be remodeling the interior of the space for the proposed use. The applicant has submitted strat, draft remodel plans as to what the space will eventually look like. The applicant will repurpose the space to fit needs, the applicant will also repurpose the existing sign located on top of the building. The sign is existing and was used by the previous tenant of the space, the criterion was met. Four, that the required dedication and improvement of streets within a development site for the proper extension and or connection of necessary streets, pedestrian facilities, and bikeways shall be made. Recommended finding for approval. The proposed use will take direct access from the corners of Cedar Street and East First Street. By viewing an aerial image of the side, there exists off-street parking from Cedar Street. No dedication of right-of-way or improvement are necessary, no pedestrian facilities or bikeways are necessary for the proposed conditional use. The criterion was addressed. Five, that the required dedication of right-of-way within the development site for the exist, extension of collector and arterial, arterial streets shall be Of collector and arterial, arterial streets shall be made. Recommended findings for approval. Dedication of right of way is not necessary for the proposed recreation and medical dispensary. Criteria is not applicable. Six, that the use of the development site shall not adversely affect access to and subdivision of abutting properties. Recommended finding for approval. Development of the site will not adversely affect access to and subdivision of abutting properties as the site. Is already fully built out, abuts local streets and does not zone for residential use. Criterion met. Section twenty-four point oh seven, general conditions. The cla, planning commission shall designate conditions concerning the conditional use permit as it deems necessary. To secure the purpose of this section. It may require guarantees and evidence that conditions have been met. Conditions set upon the permit may include the following. Regulation of use, special yard setbacks, coverage and height. Two, requiring fences, walk screens, landscaping and maintenance. Note that any area not covered by a structure or parking must be landscaped following Article twenty-five. Site plan review of this ordinance. Three, regulation and control of points of vehicular egress and ingress. Four, regulation of signs. Five, regulation of noise, vibration, odors and sightliness. Six, requiring surfacing of parking areas. Seven, requiring rehabilitation plans. Eight, regulation of hours of operation and duration of use. Or operation. Nine, requiring a time period within which the proposed use shall be developed. Ten, requiring bonds to ensure performance of special conditions. Eleven, such other conditions as will make possible the development of the city in an orderly and effec, efficient manner. And in conformity with the intent and purpose set forth in this section. Recommended findings for approval. Section twenty-four point oh seven allows the pa, planning commission to impose certain conditions of. Approval on the conditional use permit. The applicant will have to adhere to the OLCC regulations and standards for marijuana facilities. And obtain an approved license from OLCC to operate a medical recreation marijuana facility. The ability to impose certain conditions of approval is a discretionary decision planning commission can make. If planning commission decides to impose certain conditions of approval, those conditions should be clear and objective. And outlined in the final order that staff has repair, prepared for the planning commission. Ordinance number nine two four, section twenty-four point oh eight, additional conditions. For, sub item four, marijuana facilities, marijuana processors, marijuana retailers, marijuana wholesalers. And medical marijuana facilities. Subsection A, at the time the conditional use application is filed, the marijuana facility, marijuana retailer or medical marijuana facility. May not be located within one thousand feet of any of the following. A public or private elementary, secondary or career school. Recommended findings for approval. As seen in the map, the proposed marijuana facility is not within one thousand feet of a public or private elementary, secondary or career school. Criteria met. At the time of the conditional use application is filed, the marijuana retailer may not be located within one thousand feet. Of another marijuana retailer. Um, see at the time the marijuana use, I mean, the, at the time, the conditional use application is filed. The marijuana facility may not be located seven hundred and fifty feet from another marijuana facility. D, in addition to the restriction imposed by subsection A of this section, at the time, a conditional use application is filed. A medical marijuana facility may not be located within one thousand feet of another America, uh, medical marijuana facility. Recommended findings for approval. According to OLCC's website, there's a table in this document, as of May twenty. Twenty twenty-two, there is only one other marijuana facility in the city of Oak Ridge. The address of that facility is four seven six seven zero, Highway fifty-eight. This location is not within one thousand feet of the proposed marijuana facility. The criteria was met. Conclusion, as found and discussed in this staff report, the proposal meets the applicable approval criteria. Staff recommends the planning commission approve the request. Uh, do any of the commissioners have, uh, any other questions? So the. Application for the conditional use permit meets the applicable. Land use code for the city of Oak Ridge. Could I have a motion to, is there, well, first. Does the commissioner wish, do we wish, want to close the hearing or, or con, uh, continue?
Mo. I think we can close here.
Yeah.
Close the hearing.
Close the hearing, alright. Public hearing for CUP. Oh, two, twenty twenty-two is now closed. Are there any conditions that the commissioners feel should be included in the conditional use?
Nope, not for me.
John?
Nope.
Alright, do we have a motion?
I move, we approve the conditional use permit. For the use of the banner bank. Old banner bank, new business coming in.
Do I have a second?
Just a, a point, he moves that we approve it. Are we moving to vote on it?
We will after we have a second and then we can entertain discussion and then we both.
Second.
What do you want to do? You want a second then?
Yes, I do.
Alright. Is there any further discussion by the commissioners? No, yeah, no.
Well, my, my only point would be, um, I imagine that the patrons of this establishment would be similar to those. Of the, uh, distillery and the brew house, which don't seem to cause any sort of negative impact. Um, significant negative impact in the area. And I would not expect and don't expect that, uh, this one would either. It would just be a nether, uh, in my opinion, it would be helping to revitalize the uptown area. Instead of having an empty, uh, building, having a building that is being occupied, maintained. And, uh, hopefully beautified, uh, to make the uptown area more appealing for other businesses to come in as well.
Okay, Jackie, can we have a vote please?
Commissioner Gobleman.
Hi.
Commissioner McClelland.
Hi.
Commissioner Reed.
Hi.
Commissioner Partain.
Hi.
Motion passed. Congratulations.
Thank you. I really appreciate it. I appreciate your time and your thoughtful discussion about all of this and, and certainly the members of the community as well. And we will do our very best to, uh, bring a, a nice business into town and beautify that building as Commissioner McClelland said and, and make it. Fit in with your community and your community values. So, thank you again. I appreciate it.
Alright, so. The, uh. So are there any other discussion items for the commissioner or any other?
No, not this time.
Not this time, huh? Does anyone have any announcements tonight?
Just the items.
Uh, one announcement I do have, everybody, concerts in the park this Saturday, twelve to nine. So come on out and, uh, kick back and listen to some good music all day long. Alright, this time I will adjourn the meeting. Thank you all for attending.
Good night.
Good night.
So you guys have one or two.